Five thirty-two, so I'll go ahead and call our Finance Committee meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We've got three or four things on the agenda. A couple of them, I think, we'll be able to move through pretty quick. And then we'll have a hard sort of stop time at about six fifteen before we move into our council meeting. The very first item is Resolution Number Seventeen, the approval of the sale of real property located at seventy-seven fifty Oakland and Road. I think Scott was going to be here tonight to speak to us a little bit about that, but I don't see him. Was anybody from administration like to make a comment about that or the approval of it?
Sort of, Jim.
All right, thank you.
Scott is, it actually is a piece of property that was purchased several years ago to serve as a well that didn't ever work out for us. And it was built to look like a home intentionally. That well was shut down several years ago, and it began being used as a storage facility. Police Department were storing their motorcycles over there for a number of years. It serves no useful purpose for the city anymore, other than to pay utility bills on it. So we've actually been trying to get rid of it for quite a while. The land itself that it sits on doesn't have a lot of additional value, other than maybe a residential. I know Counselor Denny, you were talking about maybe as a pocket park. Trouble is, it sits in a wetlands area, and so it would be tough to be able to put anything back there that would be lasting. So what we'll do is, we've actually, there was a series of transactions that it ended up actually being owned by the City of Lawrence, not the utility. I thought initially that it was just a utility building, we would just sell it and then go right into the utility. Our intention is, once the building is sold, those monies will go right back into the utility. What will happen there? Okay?
Yeah, thank you, sir. And I think the response I got, it sets on significant amount of wetland, and it's practically undeveloped because of the amount of wetland that it sets on. Did any other counselors have any comments or questions about that? The sale of the property? Counselor Chevlot, you're on mute, and I can't see you. Do you have any questions?
No. I've read all the reports and saw the appraisals, thought they were fair.
Okay. Counselor Giles?
Oh, I thought it was fair as well.
Okay. So why don't I go ahead, and I would accept a motion to either recommend to the full council on that, if anybody'd like to make that motion.
I'll make a recommendation to the full council for approval of the sale of this property.
The motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion and a second? Because we have, half our members are on Zoom, I'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Giles? Aye. You have to say it.
Oh, I thought you just raised my hand, aye.
Counselor Chavis?
Aye.
Counselor Chevlot?
Aye.
Counselor Denny? Aye. Recommended then four to zero to the full council. And then the second item we have on the agenda tonight is Proposal Number Sixteen, Twenty Twenty-One, to transfer unused and encumbered funds to the City Rainy Day Fund pursuant to Indiana Code Thirty-six dash one dash eight point five dash one. I was the one that made this proposal and put it forward to the full council. One of the items that we've discussed and talked about, and Chris, you may, if you're interested in weighing in, you can, if I leave something off, but is that we do have our operational reserve, but we currently have a rainy day fund, but it's not funded. So if we had a mass retirement, a large amount of folks that left, where our pensions got dipped in, or another oh-five, or another oh-eight, all we have in our bank account is really the operational reserve. It's not a small amount, it's nine million dollars, but a rainy day fund, setting some funds for that is, you know, a good idea. So this proposal is put in place to say if we have any excess amount, to set it aside into the rainy day fund. Did any other counselors have any comments or thoughts on that?
Counselor Denny, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Hello? Counselor Denny, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
I'm sorry. So one of the issues with encumbered, or just invoices, would be, there's oftentimes bills that are sent to the city that we don't get to pay, and, sorry about that, we don't get to pay until the new calendar year. So they could be bills the city gets in October, November, but we're not paying those until the following year. So did you put any guardrails around the, holding back any of these funds for maybe bills that maybe even the controller doesn't know, or may not be anticipating, or they show up?
Yes, and so this is supposed to be just unused or unencumbered funds. So if we have items, for example, the twenty-nineteen, you know, the project that's still out there, any of those funds wouldn't be utilized or considered for this?
All right, my mistake. I read it as encumbered, so my apologies.
Well, it's all right. Any further questions?
And my last question on this, is this something that there's a reconciliation that's done at the end of our calendar year? And so this moving of funds to rainy day is done after the year books are closed? Or can you, what's the timeline of this?
No, it's a good question. So, yeah, in Section Two, it talks about the fund is continuing with all balances remaining there at the end of the year. So it would be after we've kind of closed out the books and ready to move into the next year.
Okay. All right, just want to make sure that I read it right. All right, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'd take a motion to recommend this to the full council.
I'll make a motion to full council, recommend this to full council.
Have a motion?
Bring it in.
And a second. All right, so I'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Giles?
Aye.
Counselor Chavis?
Yeah, aye.
Counselor Chevlot?
Yes.
Counselor Denny? Yes. We'll recommend that four to zero. And so the next item, and so I think we'll have plenty of time to discuss this tonight, is Resolution Number Nineteen, approving the issuance of stormwater revenue bonds of the City of Lawrence Stormwater Management District and matters related thereto. I understand there's a few folks that are wanting to make a presentation tonight. Mr. Bosma, were you wanting to go first?
Oh, we did.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Chairman Denny, and members of the Finance Committee, Brian Bosma, of the law firm of Cogger, Gardis, and Rigus, One-One-One Monument Circle, Suite Nine Hundred in Indianapolis, Four-Six-Two-Oh-Four. I serve as the chairman of the firm's municipal practice group, have also served as a counsel to your Lawrence Stormwater Management District Board. You'll recall, I think all of you were here then, about a year and a half ago, the council took final action to withdraw the City of Lawrence from the Marion County Stormwater District and fully establish your own City of Lawrence Stormwater Management District. It operates under a board of three mayoral appointees, and they've been doing very well, actually. So kind of got their legs under them and moving things along. The resolution that's before you is the final step in approving stormwater management district bonds that are payable solely from stormwater fees that are received from, in the district. So the process for issuing those bonds is, on October fifth, the Stormwater District Board held a preliminary meeting in which they adopted a declaratory resolution that they intended to issue bonds in the future. On October, we had published notice of a public hearing to be held on October twenty-fifth. After that hearing, the Stormwater District Board adopted a confirmatory resolution. This is exactly what the Redevelopment Commission does, a declaratory, then a confirmatory resolution. And then following that, they adopted a bond resolution, which has been submitted to your council for supplemental to the council. The final step in that process, because they are an unelected board, Indiana law requires the legislative fiscal body of the unit that, which is proposed to issue the bonds, to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of the bonds. That is what is before you this evening. Just a couple of anticipated questions. You've seen the projects, your city engineer and a consultant are prepared to go through questions on any of those projects tonight, they've got a little presentation, if you'd like to see that, or for the full council. You also have seen the payment, anticipated payment schedule for issuance of the bonds. Please report that that uses less than one-half of the stormwater fees that are received each year, so about eight hundred thousand dollars, plus or minus, will be left for maintenance, operations, and other expenditures approved by the district. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, Mr. Chairman, or members of the committee.
Does anyone have any leadoff questions to begin with? Sorry, we got on to a conversation, making sure everybody had the appropriate documents there.
You have a couple of extra copies, if you don't.
So I read through some of the beginning of the documents, can you just hit it on some of the terms of the bonds to begin with?
Yes, the bonds will be privately placed, essentially sold to a bank. And London Witty is the financial advisor on this issuance, Mr. Bob Swince is here to answer any particulars in that regard, but it was his opinion to the city that that is the most efficient and effective way to market the bonds. There's been some preliminary discussions, I think, with a few different banks, and Bob believes that there'd be good interest in the bonds. He hasn't, what did you illustrate as the interest rate, Bob?
Well, right now, what I've put in is just a five percent placeholder for those five, I would anticipate, maybe half that, two and a half?
Two and a half to three, yeah, that's what I would think, too.
So that's a real two and a half percent, because I know on some of the other bond issuance, like the fire department, we ended up going to the full five, or did we not on that? Okay, okay, that was part of the testimony originally.
High is a prime, so it should not, it will not, recently, they just raised, you'd be looking at, it's around two point five to three point two, is what we're seeing.
Tom and Lisa, did you hear Sharie's comment on that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Sometimes the resolutions, the resolutions throw people off, because you set a maximum, you never want to set it too low, because if you're a scooch over, you have to go through the whole process again. So we try to give some room, that's why the five percent appeared there in a couple of different places. Yeah, but we anticipate, again, we just closed another issue last week that was two point six, and not exactly similar to this, but I would think it'd be two and a half to three range.
And what was the term?
The term is twenty years. They are issued presumably in twenty-twenty-one, before the end of the year, and the final payment is in on August one, twenty forty-one. Biannual or semiannual payments in February and August one of each year.
Twenty years, max five percent, probably two point five?
Yes.
And it's twelve million?
Twelve million dollars principal, yes, not to exceed.
So those are just some of the foundational questions, does anybody else have any questions before I ask a few more?
I just wondered, if this is Sri, city engineer, I just wanted to just, I mean, a couple months back, I was here, even before the bond was introduced into the Stormwater Board, in explaining that this is coming. And I also sent out the list of projects the next day, saying this is the list of projects to all the council members. So, and I do have a presentation to go into detail on every project, which I'll be more than happy to do it, either this meeting or the full council meeting. Just so, just so everybody knows, that we selected the project based on the drainage complaints we received over the last several years. We had a master plan, we updated the master plan earlier this year, with the new complaints we received and the new issues we've been seeing all along the city. So the number, the list of projects is spread all around the city, and, you know, you can see that a couple of the bigger projects are on the western side of the, I mean, on the old Lawrence, where there is drainage infrastructure literally not existing. And then, you know, we just went through an extensive process to get these projects, because part of the bond requirement is, we have to select these projects, we have to identify the projects for the bond to fund it. So these projects were identified as a project that will be solely funded by the bond. So we cannot add any more projects outside this, because this is, this is published as a list of projects that will be funded through the bond.
Correct. But do you have a timeline for these, so the bonds are twenty years?
Oh, yeah, these projects will start in the planning design stages, as soon as the council approves that, when we close the bond, we'll start the planning design process. None of this should take more than a year of planning and design, all be constructed in the next four or five years.
And not asking questions about the merits of the projects, because I think everybody agrees, these are things that we kind of need to do. Why not wait a year until you have the planning process kind of done? Why, why, because you did do all of those things that you said, and honestly, and this is my mistake, you caught me a little bit off guard, and that was my email back, I didn't realize that you had started the process in October, I had it in my mind, this was a twenty-twenty-two.
I mean, the master plan was, the plan, the study was needed even to get to here.
Okay.
So that was not an exception, we already had a master plan, it was twenty-three years old, we have to update the master plan, even to know what our requirements or needs are. So that had to happen. For projects to go get into actual design, that makes, takes a lot more money, for twelve million dollar worth of projects, would take a couple million dollar worth of design and survey and all that stuff, which we currently don't have it. So the bond will fund the design and then bid the projects out. So this is, and then we'll get it through the construction. So that's the reason why I'm coming here, so actually, that design process can start, we can start doing the design process and start rolling these projects out for bid with the bondman.
So what you just said is, you're going to design, how many do you have, ten projects or twelve?
Twelve.
Twelve projects, all within the first year?
It will start rolling on, I mean, some of this could be combined into one big project. It's not like, every project has to be designed separately, so if a consultant is there, it'll club many projects together, depending on the size of the project. And usually, like I said, we don't anticipate land acquisition on any of these projects, though that is usually the thing that takes longer. So, you know, maybe in eight to twelve months, we'll bid money of those projects out.
Thank you, Sharie. Yes.
I guess my question, Mr. Chair, was kind of similar to what you asked, is that we were going to pay for the design of all the projects upfront with the bond. I'm questioning, or here's my question, did we look at any other financing methods to finance these projects?
We are constantly looking at different grants, but there is not an actual grant that is available in the next several years.
How about short-term funding to fund these projects individually?
No, I can't figure, find a way to fund these projects individually.
You've not attempted to find any?
I have been constantly looking. There are Swift Grants out there, which still needs a lot more design to be done, even to apply for the grant.
Because my concern, I have a concern, I want, I'm in huge support of stormwater, but my concern is front-loading the funding, paying for all the administrative design upfront, and then the project takes a long time to do, the debt service on some of this, on this bond yearly, could nearly fund a project. If I looked correctly, I believe the debt service on this is six hundred thousand?
The principal and the interest we are anticipating are around like a million, less than a million dollars.
Right, where I think the most expensive job on the list is one point six, or two million? And we got nine million dollars in reserve?
The interest is about three hundred.
We've made a lot of bonds lately. So my concern is continuing to bond up the city, and I know that there are some alternative ways to fund these projects that might give us more flexibility and less debt service, and less administrative costs on the front end. And so that is my concern, I wish that we had an option to compare, and if your option of bonding is the most cost-effective and best method, I should have some options to be able to take a look at that.
Counselor Giles, I'm not aware of any other mechanism for the Stormwater District to finance projects, other than a grant, or as funds come in. And as funds come in, would probably give maybe five or six hundred thousand dollars per year that could be allocated to projects, but designing them upfront is really a requirement to do so. You don't have funds for that, it's an expensive process.
So I don't, I'm not an expert, I made a few phone calls.
Sure.
And I heard that Mayor Ballard used some short-term funding to do projects, also I hear the mayor in Carmel has done some similar ways to fund projects, and then wrap them up into a bond on the back end.
Yeah, you could.
And I don't know all the details, but I'm just wish that my professionals would at least put that in front of me, instead of me hearing it on the street, when I ask someone, hey, is there another way that we could pay for this outside of a bond?
So I am familiar with the financing, both in Carmel and Indianapolis, and what you're referring to is a bond anticipation note, you will see that that is also authorized here.
No, it wasn't a band, because we always use a band, it was short-term bank loan, and then before that loan becomes due, they were telling me they wrapped them all up into bonds on the back end. Because I asked if it was a band, and I can get more detail, I just thought, you know, is anyone else familiar with that at all?
I'm guessing what you're describing is a bond anticipation.
Okay, all right.
You still have to issue a bond eventually for that?
Right.
This is segregated, these funds are segregated, they can only be used for stormwater projects.
Stormwater.
The fees can only be used for stormwater projects. So wrapping it with other bond issues would be a pretty difficult task, if not impossible.
Well, I want, I heard with this situation, we didn't even necessarily have to pay into the bond, maybe we could just pay it off in a five-year loan. And then they were saying, you have this bunch of five-year loan, you know, it was a short-term loan, that they said if you got to the end and you couldn't pay it, you could then get a bond. This was just general lunch conversation.
Right.
Right, I'm not trying to act like I, you know.
Sure.
But I'm just worried about the level of debt that we're putting on the city. This is my baby, right of project, so this is about the best interest of financial of the city, it was best interest of me and my community, just to say, wrap it up, and we'll let it be. But I'm worried about the long-term health of the city at this point, and I'm just curious if someone would put something in front of us, instead of another bond. It's like every time I turn around, there's another bond approval. I've approved so many bonds in the last six years, I just wonder, is there another way to pay for things?
Yeah, so the district is a separate entity from the city, and so this is a debt of the district, secured fully by, not necessarily the city, secured fully by the stormwater fees that are anticipated to be received.
Correct.
So I think this is the most efficient way to do it. You could enter into a bond anticipation note process, I don't think anybody anticipates that rates are going to be better in three years than they are right now.
It's not about rates for me, it's about why, I want to, it's taken so long to get to this place about handling this, that there is some skepticism, and just trying to tackle so much of this, I mean, we're currently delaying, I was just made aware that we're currently delaying jobs based on material costs, and not having material availability. And so I just don't want to spend a bunch of money on the front end to a bunch of guys in suits, and it's a long time before we have shovels in the ground. And if we were able to do it job by job by job, by using those tax dollars, I just feel more comfortable that the money would, because bonding is expensive.
No, there is no way we will be able to do job by job. The reason is, we have needs, maintenance needs, so if we get a million, one point eight million a year from stormwater revenue fees, we pay three hundred thousand to Indianapolis for their debt service, which is what they took the bonds a few years ago, that's what they, how they are doing their projects, is they bonded their stormwater several years ago, and got several million dollars to do all their stormwater projects. So we are not doing anything different than what Indianapolis did.
I know that, but that's none of my concern.
So, and then we have almost a half a million to six hundred thousand need of operations and maintenance that we need every year. And that leave us with a little less than a million dollars to do whatever, I mean, to do a project, it includes design, construction, planning, all that stuff.
So didn't you say, though, let me ask, I don't want to put any words in your mouth, and I apologize if I overlooked something, I'm sorry. But it was my understanding that I thought we got this bond, that we would have enough money in our yearly tax allowance to pay the debt service, as well as do the maintenance.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
What I'm saying is, until we accumulate a couple, two to three million dollars in the next three years, we will not be able to do a single project, a single big project you see in there, because we don't have that kind of money there to do one project.
If we waited three, wouldn't it, would it save us more, if we waited two, would it save us the money, a considerable amount of money, compared to bonding to twenty forty? Those are the type of answers, those are the type of things that I want to see on paper, to make a sound decision for our community.
Counselor Giles, in five years, the project, the project value you see there, eleven million, the project cost will be up to twenty million, because.
We don't know that, I mean, our supply chain costs are high as ever right now.
The support chain, Counselor Giles, the board, the need, the infrastructure is already failing, so we are fixing it right at fifty, even before it's completely failed.
It's not, I'm not arguing with you, it's failing, I live there, okay? So, I mean, you ain't got to tell me about flooding yards, my yard floods, my basement floods, I've had four sump pumps in six years, because it runs twenty-four seven. All right, I, my street, you guys fixed my street, my yards, my yard, my driveway, my street, water runs down my street and not in the ditch, so it's not about that. It's about a philosophy, the same philosophy I had, considered to the fire station, right? It's not changing, it's about the considerable cost of bonds. I'm concerned that we are bonding ourselves too much. So it's not about your work, and I'm just trying to see, and I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm against this bond, I'm just trying to see if there is another way to pay for this, and since I haven't had anything on paper, I got to do a clumsy discussion.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to learn, really honestly, I swear to you, I'm not trying to, you know, do that, I'm just trying to figure out if there's another way.
And for the interest of time, let me see if our other counselors might have some questions, and I think Chris may have one. Counselor Chevlot or Counselor Chavis, do either of you have a question? Because we've brought up several good points, and I think Counselor Chevlot was just about to ask a question, and he froze.
Yeah. Thank you, okay, thank you, Counselor Denny. Just two brief questions. I don't have the starter projects that we had before us from several months ago in front of me, so I apologize, but that hasn't changed from when we were doing that four, three, four months ago, to what you just showed, is that correct, Sri?
Same project list, identical project list, yes, Counselor.
Got it, okay, so that hasn't changed. And the second, as sponsor of this, I think it's important, and Mr. Bosma, you brought this up, but I think it's important that the city is not going into debt with the issuance of this bonds, because it's a separate stormwater district, and these bonds are placed currently, or the plan is through the bank and then through the open market, they're placed with the assurance that the notes are going to be paid for by the fees that we're collecting as a result of the stormwater fees, that we, the reason we withdrew from Indianapolis is to have more control over this, in addition to also having those revenues to help pay for those projects. Does that capture that correctly?
That's exactly correct, Counselor. The stormwater fees can only be, you now capture them, you now control them, you didn't before, and as you will recall from the discussions with the Marion County Stormwater District, very few projects had been constructed by them over the years, which is why there's a pretty healthy list of needs. But today, now you have the vehicle to address.
Let me ask one more question, I'm sorry, I understand that, so let me ask you this question. We do all the, everything on the list, is the city dry? Are we done?
No.
All right, we're not done, so that's why I'm concerned about how far the money goes. I understand that the tax dollars of the Stormwater District is not, in putting debt on the city, I want to see how far, how far we could stretch the dollar. So that's why, if you said twelve million solves the problem, I signed the bond.
Twelve million will solve a lot of the problem on the.
All of it.
I mean, no, no.
Because every street counts.
Let it, we have discussed.
Go ahead, Sharie, please, and then we'll catch up with the response.
No, who's, who, I'm sorry.
Please speak, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, it won't solve a hundred percent of the problem, but it will solve the problems of a lot of areas that badly need something to be done.
Do you have a hard percentage?
What?
What I'm trying to see is, if I spend twelve million dollars, and it's for the next twenty years, and we haven't done anything for thirty years, and that's pretty much going to tie up. to tie up most of the, oh, let me ask you this question. Does this debt service plus the maintenance money pretty much tie up the, the revenue for the next 20 years?
Correct. So basically, that's what, that's why we have laid out the, the packages. We are not spending all of the revenue on the bond. We still have 500 to 600,000 left for maintenance for any unforeseen.
No new projects, maintenance.
That could be any new upcoming, any new projects too. 600,000 is a healthy contingency to have every year to a small project that comes up.
Okay, I understand that. But you understand what I'm trying to say on a hard question, meaning if these, you said you had a master plan and there was projects that were set. We have 12 here or 10 here, whatever the number may be. But when you did your master plan, it might've been 20. I understand that this is the priority. I'm just asking that basically this 12 will be handled in the next 20 years. We'll have money for maintenance, but we won't have any additional money for any major, you know, what's being left off the list, I guess, and how we're going to fund that, you know?
If I can add one thing, your Stormwater fees will increase.
Okay, that's a good question.
Stormwater fees are going to go up and we're kind of presuming it's going to stay at 1.8 million. It's not, I'm confident this last year was probably close to 2 million.
2.1.
You put it in the budget.
And it will continue to increase year after year.
Okay, thank you. That, that answers my concern. Thank you.
And Counselor Chavis, you hadn't had an opportunity yet. Did you have any questions? I think Counselor Chevlot had a follow on. You're on mute, Counselor Chavis.
What is the, what is the projected increase year over year though?
I don't have that with me off the hand, do you?
Yeah, between last year, it's basically five cents every thousand square feet of the area we built. So based on my calculation, between last year and this year, it went up $100,000. So that is between last year and this year, the five cent increase for every thousand square feet. So the more, the more development that comes in and with the, and the, and next year is going to be another five cents. So I would say a good estimate would be 100 to 150,000 dollars every year going up.
So that's where you got 1.8 for 2021 and 2 million for 2022.
Correct.
Okay. Counselor, or Ms. Wheeler, I think you had a question or a comment.
Sorry, did Tom have a question?
Oh, Tom, Counselor Chevlot, did you have a question? You're breaking up.
Yeah, I, I have one up. It's actually more of a, are we good?
Yes.
Okay. It's, it's actually, okay. I'm getting Lisa saying, okay, you're good, Tom. So it's actually more of a request is that once we go to process and then we're placing these with the, with whatever bank, I would request that we get information back to this, either this board or the council, which bank that we place this, to its will.
I think you broke up on us.
Yeah, if you're, if you're asking for a report back.
Given that we're not going directly to market with it, we're going to a bank, I, I would just.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a bid process, an informal bid process, not a public bid process. But London Witty will contact, will have a term sheet, will contact a number of banks, some of which have already been talked with and have expressed interest. And then the one offering the lowest interest rate, of course, will be selected. And this really is one of the most efficient ways to issue a bond. Private placement, not a bunch of refunding or other things with it. It's, it's a pretty clean process and suits don't get much that way.
Okay.
As much as the big ones.
I'll tell you, man, I need.
So one, one other, just, just one other quick, just one other quick follow up. So that sheet that comes back with this bid process, as you laid out, Mr. Bosma, will it also have cost of issuance and then the, the fees associated with what's going to be cost to issue those bonds, those fees, which, will those cost of issuance costs be on there?
I'm sorry, Counselor Chevlot, I feel like I'm interrupting you. The cost of issuance are estimated at this point to be $200,000. There is a debt service reserve of 805,000 that, that takes a chunk of the money. And I don't think there's any way around that, or might there be, Bob?
Well, there might be a way around the reserve fund and that cost of issuance assumed underwriting, so I would anticipate it's going to be a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you.
200,000, Mr. Chair, if I can answer, ask a follow up question, please.
Sure, and then I, absolutely, go ahead.
Was the 200, so that's all inclusive, all in for all of the administrative fees?
Yes.
Associated with this bond?
Yes, Madam President, it is. And it will be less than that.
Ms. Wheeler, you've been very patient.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize to the council members on Zoom. There's a slight delay, which is what is making us talk over you sometimes because we think you're done, but you're not really done. So we apologize. And I'll do that on behalf of Mr. Bosma as well. I have two questions. One, I think is for Brian and, or I'm sorry, Mr. Bosma, and one I think is for this.
Free to call me Brian.
Free to call me Chris anytime, as you well know. My first question is related to what the proposed budget was for Stormwater, which was 2.9, I believe 2.9 million dollars was the proposed 2021 budget. As you know, Mr. Bosma, based on our discussions, that number was not fully appropriated by the council. So number one, you know, I'd like to confirm that the anticipation is that in 2022, there is actually 2.9 million dollars available. And maybe that's a question for Sri, because that's what was proposed. And second, Mr. Bosma, can you speak to the problem of not having sufficient funds appropriated in the 2022 budget to pay principal and interest on these bonds if they're approved? And then my third question is, what happens if there are supply chain problems with some of these projects, if some of them bid out more than what is expected? I assume this is what you hope to do, but it may not be what you actually do. And the Stormwater Board is free to change this list at any time. And I want to make sure that's a correct understanding for the council.
First of all, that is, could happen, that a project comes in at a higher bid than anticipated in the budget and they'll have to live within the budget or find alternate funds for it.
So when the engineer, when the consultant came up with the estimates, they threw in a, you know, they came up with a 2023, 24 estimate and also added 25% contingency to every single estimate you see there. So the whole reason is to capture any unforeseen bid changes or change orders that will happen in construction. So the budget you see for every single project, it's well cushioned to handle any for future changes.
So your anticipation is all 12 projects will be done by 2025?
Twenty, yeah, three to four years, yeah.
Three to four years, okay. That was the, the point I have a problem with. And I, I, maybe we can go into detail a little bit more here or in the next part. Because it, it seems like every community, municipality, school district, everybody is getting American Rescue Plan funds and everybody's bidding on projects right now. You really think that we'll have 12 contractors that can do this and within the budget, in the timeline we allow? You have two projects now that got kicked at 2022 because we couldn't get the supplies. I don't think you personally, but the.
Yeah, Counselor Denny, this 12 million worth of projects, it's not a big scale of project when you come to construction world.
Sure, sure, sure.
Most of these projects, if you look at it, this, there is, this project does not include any special materials. These are pipes, ditch gratings, hybrid ditches, you know, I mean, like 24 inch RCP pipes, which are still available. The, the supply chain demand thingy that everybody's talking about is more building related or more like special materials that are hard, that are hard to manufacture, which is manufactured outside US or whoever. But these are drainage structures, which are, we can go to, go pick it up even today. So none of those hasn't been an issue and I don't anticipate, I mean, this, these projects are like, you know, six, eight months worth of construction project, even though it's a 12 million dollar scale, but it's, it's not a big scale when it goes to construction, construction industry. So and none of these projects have any special materials, which we have to wait on six months to procure.
Alright, I'm sorry. I'm so happy you said that.
May I address Ms. Wheeler's?
Oh, yes, sir. I, I have a hard time not saying Speaker Bosma.
It's, I'm no longer, thank you. And quite happy with that, by the way. So on the, on the, I, I don't know what all your budget situations are. I just, I know they're difficult right now. You, you will want to have in your final budget, if you want these bonds, and if you don't want to be sued by the city of Indianapolis, you will want to have sufficient debt service to cover the payment back to Indianapolis, which we are required by law to make, which next year is in the order of 302,000. It's, that's the low point. It's like 392 the next year. You want that in there. And if you're going to approve these bonds, you want that money in, appropriated in your debt service. The city and the district are committing to make those payments to the financial institution that, that buys this. Excuse me one second, pardon me. And it will have to be made one way or another. There's just no reason not to have an appropriation for it. If you want, if you want it to happen, city of Indianapolis, they're going to get their money one way or the other. Maybe they retain it from, talk to treasurer into retaining it before they send it out to us. That's not what they normally do, but.
And I, I don't think anyone would, wants that to happen.
Right.
So I, I think there would be appropriation there. And my understanding is that bill is due in June and then another payment in December. So we'll, we'll make sure that that's, that's done correctly.
Mr. Chair?
Is this one, is that right? June and December for the repayment? Half and half, okay.
Sir.
I'm sorry. I think this is for Sri. Again, and I apologize for if I'm, my ignorance on the process.
Sure.
Um, once, if we, if this council decides to approve the bonds and you guys have the money, you say you're going to go to design. How does the minority business selection come into play?
So the consultant who did the, who did the scoping study for this project, the project list you see there, the consultant who did it is a minority business, who did, who helped us with all that scoping support. We have minority businesses doing, helping with the design and inspection on projects. So we are, we are stepping up our minority participation quite a bit, at least from DPW and Stormwater side.
Can I ask, can I also ask that you guys provide us with a report on that? That is something that was actually, has been in the actual ordinance for minority participation. We always have someone tell us what they're doing, but nothing's never in writing and nor are we aware of anything until we ask. Here's the challenge I'll give you, and I'll put this on the record. Because I found it very interesting and exciting to hear that there's no special equipment, there's no special, uh, 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 skill sets that's over the top. This is general construction, pretty easy projects, right? So typically, when I'm sitting over here encouraging minority and women owned businesses to be in the play, we usually get the bit of, hey, people are bidding, they don't have the ability to do the volume. And a lot of times it's correct. I'm not saying it's not. But in this particular project, from what you just described, which got me excited, this is a great opportunity for us to really hire and spend this money with minority businesses above and beyond our participation goals, because it's something that we can achieve. And I wish, it makes me sleep better and feel better, and I think I'm not the only person on this council, that if you did all this work, as you hear, it would be nice if you had some forecasting done on who your part, your planned partners was. I don't know all the legalities of how far you can go, but it sure would make me feel better if you had, if you could give us as much as you could.
I can answer on the, on the procurement side of that. So these projects are probably going to be publicly bid projects. So the project's going to be designed and it's going to be out on bid. So then there is a bid process that, by the state statute, that we open the bids, we review the bids, and then whoever is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder is awarded the bid, just like any, any other public agency does.
But there's some opportunity, I know.
Yeah, so basically, our, our audience says that we have to request a 15, 8 and 3% participation on the contracts, which is what we have been doing on our contracts. Sometimes we, the speciality of projects, sometimes it's going to be.
Also encourage the principal to sub out some of those other stuff. And it doesn't have to go, so those are just the things. I'll leave it alone.
I mean, like, if everything is done per the law, I mean, whatever the law provides and whatever our ordinance does, we can't force them to do anything, but we, we, we can tell them we need a participation.
Make me feel comfortable, I ask, I just leave it there.
One follow on question I have, and staying just for the interest of time. So just a couple of numbers I, I jotted down that you had mentioned. If we went at the two and a half percent level, our first year interest is 300,000 and then 200,000 for the fee. So that's 500,000 just in the first year. Do you have an idea of how much interest and fees there would be over the 20 year funded total?
We gave an illustration, we distributed an illustration to you.
I don't have it.
Okay, I, we submitted it to, to the council. I'll give you this one. And you'll see that this is, as you recall, Mr. P, did I just?
Uh-oh.
It'll, it'll, there's.
I'm just here to help. So you'll see that illustration, which Mr. Swinns indicated was at 5%, a 5% estimate. He's estimating that it could be as low as one half of that interest showed, so. And we'll be happy to report back on, once the bids are received, there'll be a amortization schedule put together and you all can see it.
So what you provide, and I'll give this, this back to you, I don't want to take your, your paper. It says based on 3% rate.
Is it based on 3%?
I'm not sure what you.
It's, it's the one. Right, it's the, the schedule, I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right. I mean, it's, I had to put my glasses on to read it. That's all right. So we're at 3,900,000 over a space of 20 years. So even after these projects are done, we're going to, at your quickest estimate, we're still going to pay for 15 years. Why would we not, and just, I'll just cut to the question real quick. Why would we not utilize cash, pay these one by one, or even utilize the free money we have now, the American Rescue Plan dollars, to get some of these started and then pay, you know, try to do some of these over the next four to five years?
Yeah, I think Sri kind of addressed this already. With the funds that you receive in fees, you might do one, be able to do one or a half a project per year, including design and everything else.
But if we use the American Rescue Plan or use some of our operational reserve, we could at least get started.
Yeah, I don't know what funds are available to you here. There is a reimbursement provision that is in the, the bond ordinance, I'm sorry, the bond resolution that does say if the city fronts money for design or something like this, that it can be reimbursed, the bonds to the city.
And that reimbursement goes where? Into the Stormwater?
From, from whatever fund the city paid for in advance for expenses. For design or something like that.
Okay. Any, any real quick questions? We're, we're just about running out of time before our next meeting actually starts, our full council meeting. Counselor Chevlot, I see you popped on real quick, but then you froze.
A motion to move.
He said so moved.
Yeah, I would just like to make a motion to the full council for approval.
All right, there's been a motion to put the full council for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
The motion's been, there's been a motion and a second. I'll do a quick roll call vote. Counselor Chevlot?
Yep.
You're on, I think you're still on mute, Counselor Chavis.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, from Counselor Chavis.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Denny?